This conference will now be recorded.
Must be time.
Alrighty.
Mike, is Lisa gonna be here?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't, she is on her way back from a funeral, so she may not be here.
We're gonna go ahead.
Yes, please, I'm sorry.
The June 14 council may call our order, would you please stand for the pledge allegiance and open our side?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. On addition, my God, invisible, the religion of justice for all.
Thank you. First item on my agenda will be considered approval of the consent agenda items, improvements from the May 24th meeting, and statement of the bill's paid amount of 443,878,48.
So moved.
It has been moved and seconded approved, the consent agenda with the clerk please.
Kayhar? Shriver?
Yes.
Stites? Okay, oh, I'm sorry, customer Malat?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda will be request or comments from the public, and the clerk has informed me that there is one to be read.
Take your name and address.
Okay. Mayor McTaggart, members of city council staff, ladies and gentlemen. I am Merle Bland, I live at 8311 Garfield Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas 66112. I speak tonight on behalf of Business West, as I have done for the past 10 years. Business West is a voluntary association with about 75 members, mostly small business. Property taxes are a serious concern, and most of our members, particularly those wishing to expand. The Edwardsville Council is to be commended for holding the line on property taxes during the last few years. The solution to a more viable economy is to increase the tax base, not the taxes. Thank you for your consideration. I have written remarks I'd like to pass out, I'd be happy to ask any questions.
Thank you.
And congratulations, Merle, and are you retiring with your...
Oh, so.
Thank you for your service.
You bet. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, as you noted, we do have an additional comment that was emailed in and requested it be read. Uh, this is from Connie Henry, 1123 South 102nd Terrace. Dear Mayor and City Council, I was happy to see last week that the mowing crew removed the overgrown volunteer trees and vines from the center planter at the cemetery. I was dismayed, however, to see that the bushes, which were planted in the south planter, were cut down. Those bushes were drought resistant, deer resistant, low maintenance, and lovely. Yes, they had vines growing in them. It saddens me that any attempts at making the cemetery a beautiful peaceful place are being neglected and cut down. Nothing planted in that brick planter is going to grow or thrive without being watered. There's a spigot conveniently placed in the north of it just for that purpose, I saw no hose there last summer. The north fence line is again covered with overgrown volunteer trees. The west fence line has grape vine and probably poison ivy growing along it again. The city keeps saying those will come out when the fencing is removed, yet those bids are still coming in. It's been all talk so far about this issue and others for years. No action ever happens. Three dead trees have not been filled, which I spoke recently to the local arborist. He told me that they are dangerous and must be removed. The city has full responsibility for the maintenance and upkeep of the cemetery. The plan as of 2019 was to hire a third full-time public works employee to work in the cemetery and in the city. Money was budgeted for that position. When the public works supervisor resigned in 2020, the plan was to let the new supervisor make the hiring decision. Did that ever happen? There is so much more to maintaining the cemetery than keeping it mowed. It needs regular upkeep. What is go- what is it going to take to get work done there? I'm tired of talk, the city needs to honor its commitment, not just with lip service, but with planned thoughtful maintenance. Sincerely, Connie Henry. Just for the council's information, I have been in contact and dialogue with Ms. Henry today, and provided a little bit more details on some of the ongoing projects that the CPPS Board is, has been made aware of, and may not be out in the general public yet, but if you have questions specifically to these items, I would, I'd be happy to answer them at this time. The bushes in the southernmost planter were removed. I mean, Ms. Henry was right, that it was pretty overgrown to this point. We had talked to our, the mowing contractor out there to see what they thought would be a good way to get it, you know, beautify it up and get it cleaned up, and their recommendation was to just remove it. That was also in line with the CPPS Board when we first consolidated the group. Uh, we brought the group together at the cemetery and kind of, you know, put our eyes on the site and thought about, and, you know, essentially put a, put together a list of maintenance items that we wanted to, the new board to address, one of those being the center planners, or, excuse me, the, the planners, both the center one and the southern one. The center one has been, it was over, it was really significantly overgrown, recently got cleaned up, it's looking a lot better. The southernmost one that Ms. Henry was speaking about specifically was cleared out completely. CPPS Board in that initial meeting had thrown up the idea of starting an adopt a planer program, where we would, you know, let a community group come out and sponsor a planter, and they could, you know, plan out there and be the ones maintaining it, and they'd have a placard or a sign or things like that. You'll see those in, you know, parks or cemeteries in different areas, so. That was an idea that was thrown out by the CPPS Board, and clearing out the planter was essentially the first step in doing that. We ran these, you know, what the, what we had planned to ask the mowers and contractors to do to the CPPS Board, and we were not given direction to the contrary of any of that. If we, if they had told us specifically, don't mess with, well, we want to see with the center, with the southern planter to get it cleaned up, and that's the direction we would have gone, but it wasn't the direction of the board at that time, and they wanted to move forward with the adopt a planer program. Uh, we're probably going to be presenting the parameters of that to the CPPS Board at the July meeting. So get it cleared out, and then, you know, figure out an application process, a review process, and exactly how are we going to make sure that someone can adopt it, and what's the, you know, oversight of it. So the fence project, we had since, we originally planned on having that, the, uh, let's see, the, the fence along 104th Street, uh, that's right at the entrance of the cemetery. The plan is to have that completely removed, and it's just not really serving a real purpose. It doesn't keep anybody out, the fence has never locks. A lot of the grade is actually below the fence line, just because of, you know, the natural grading that happens out there. We went out for bids in May, I want to say, and they've come back, really not bids, but quotes. Those came back a little bit higher than what we had anticipated, and so because of the price threshold that it hits, it, we needed to do the, the sealed bid process for the work, and it's just been a matter of it not, the documents not being put together and put out for bid, but the plan is to get that done. Removal of that piece of fence, uh, and then probably what bumped the price up was it did include sections of repair to the section of the fence that she's talking about, the north fence, getting those trees cleared out. The southernmost fence, there's some portions that are just unaligned and unattached, so fixing that. And then in the southeast portion of the cemetery, there's some overgrowth, really on the, uh, the other side of the fence line, that needs to get addressed and cut back, and the sections of that fence need to be repaired too. So we're hoping to move forward with all of that, with the fence project by the end of this summer. Correct, so that's technically not the public works department, it's budgeted out of the parks department as a, a groundskeeper position, and he does have duties in the cemetery. To this point, it's been a lot of, less of the detail work that I think Ms. Henry's talking about, the, you know, pruning, watering, and keeping up with the flowers that are out there. Um, if there's low spots that need to be filled with topsoil, overseeding that needs to get done, picking up the decorations after a certain amount of time that they've been out there. That kind of regular maintenance piece of it versus the, like I said, some of the finer point detail work that Ms. Henry's talking about. We've also kind of expanded our contractual relationship with the digger, so prior to this year, it was up to the funeral homes to find the digger for funeral services, and when that happened, I mean, the relationship worked fine. The problem was, uh, there was, there really wasn't an impetus for the diggers to come back and do some backfilling, and so we got behind on that, so you'd see graves sunken in that needed to get backfilled and overseeded. The diggers are now under contract with us specifically, so funeral homes, we have to use our diggers. And now the diggers, when there's a semi, when there's a funeral, excuse me, there's a timetable set where they come back and backfill it until it's settled completely, at which point our crews take over the overseeding and the watering of it. I, I can, Ms. Henry used to be on the cemetery board, so, I mean, she's aware of the, that process and that, and the role of that board has in, you know, what capacity that serves, but I think, I mean, she just wants to bring it to everybody's attention, as she's done in the past, yeah. Uh, good afternoon, or good evening. Item number three is to consider recommendation of approval from the planning commission regarding the replat, final plat for H&amp;H addition, lots one, two, and three, and acceptance of public rights away and easements. This plat might seem familiar to some of you, because on September 14th, 2020, council approved the replat, final plat for the property and accepted, uh, and acceptance of dedicated easements and rights of way. However, on April 19th, 2021, the applicant who was Atlas Surveyors submitted a, a new application for replat of lots one, two, and three at the direction of Wyandotte County's Geospatial Service Department. Uh, this was to address multiple survey errors relating to the exterior boundaries and bearings and distances. The approval of this replat will not result in any significant dimensional changes to the previously, previously approved, uh, lots, nor will it affect any accepted dedicated right of ways. On April 19th, 2021, the planning commission held a public hearing in regard to this replat application. Uh, the property owners and applicant were not available for questions at the public hearing, no comments were made. Closing, staff supports the recommendation of the planning commission approval of the replat, final plat, with the two conditions included in the staff report. City council acceptance of dedicated public rights away and easements is required prior to the filing of replat document. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Mayor.
What was the main reason for the survey?
So there was just, um, there were gaps and gours along the surrounding property lines, and the most significant error was a seven-foot error on lot three on the southern, uh, property line. So this just addresses those errors in angle and distance, so.
I, I would note that there is a letter from Atlas Surveyors kind of in your packet near the back that, maybe in the middle, that outlines or summarizes their errors. So, in summary, the surveyor had errors, uh, in the documents, and when it went to get, uh, put into the GIS systems, those errors were found. Uh, they were significant enough that the surveyor, that the county surveyor said, you need to redo the entire survey. Sometimes you'll find a small error in a plat, and it can be corrected at administrative level, but it was their request to do it, and therefore, the surveyor and the applicant were required to go back through the process.
And it should be noted during this process, we did reach out to, uh, their, the county, uh, and they approved, they didn't have any comments to make. So there's, all of those errors were addressed. So it's my understanding that if any residential structure were to be built on lot one, that property owner would have to install a road there. That's correct.
Uh, it happened to me, our design standards, it doesn't necessarily have to be curb and guttered.
I mean, the, you know, the section's there, but it, it depends what they propose. So they could propose a, an open ditch section, as long as it can meet the widths and the requirements for drainage and slopes, et cetera.
It looks like there is, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, there's a direct there.
So the, the area to the north, I guess that would be the northeast corner. There is a current residence there, and effectively, they acquired what is lot two. And lot one was acquired, uh, from, by the father of the owner of lot three. So what happened is, what you see roughly is lots one and two was a single lot. They wanted to sell that off to two different property owners, but that was going to create lot one without any public access. So in order to have a public access, I mean, they had options, right? I mean, they had various options. The option that they selected was to plat all the right of, you know, plat, dedicate the right of way and be responsible for future construction if they decide to build on that lot. Or, quite honestly, those lots could probably be subdivided again, as long as they meet the standards for, uh, you know, construction lot sizes, et cetera. So I believe right now that's zoned in the ag district. So that, so they all have a minimum five acres. For septic is generally one acre. So that's the only way these could develop, would be one acre. Now, our zoning ordinance, so currently it's five acres for ag. If they went to R1, they would go down to, to the, uh, three acre minimum. And if they went to, uh, uh, it's called neighborhood developed without sewer, those could be one acres. That assumes that they can meet the other requirements of septics, right? So they have to do soils test, so the, you don't, you don't really do the old, the old style testing, so now they do an actual soil sample, run it through a lab, and they determine what its ability to perk is, and then that may increase that size above one acre, but the state minimum is one. Correct, that lot, that lot, uh, that lot actually has a permanent easement on the property to the west side of this, but it's only for that lot. Because originally, they wanted to use that easement to access lot one, and that's, that's not permissible, because they didn't have rights to that easement. Number two, today, we wouldn't have approved that, because every lot has to have access to a public right of way, and there's minimums for the widths of, of, of those. So in the subdivision ordinance, it requires a minimum of 50 feet. In the zoning ordinances, that may be increased depending on what the, you know, what the zoning of the lot is. So that wouldn't be a permitted lot today, it was created whenever it was created. They are not the same owners, no.
Kayhar? Malat? Shriver? Stites? Adams? And McTag?
Yeah, whatever you want to call it. Two weekends ago now, so it's been a while. We survived that much. All right, good evening. I'm excited to be recommending that we, um, consider authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for our 2021 surface seal project. A part of, uh, the six-year rotation plan that I want to get going, this is a good start to that. This project will be funded through a combination of the special street fund and the special sales tax fund. Uh, for the background, the city of Edwardsville opened seal bids for this project on June 10th. The project will include asphalt surface sealing for approximately four miles of streets south of K32. Uh, these streets have been previously crack sealed in preparation for the surface seal work. Contractors submitted bids for the project, and the results are summarized. Hall Brothers Incorporated was a loan bidder at $1.73 a square yard for a bid amount of 119,792 and 12 cents. Uh, the budgeting cost estimate that we came up with was $2 a square yard, and that was 138,488. So it's in the ballpark of where we were hoping. Uh, staff is recommending that city council authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement for the sum of the bid items to Hall Brothers, Inc., in the amount of 119,792 and 12 cents. Yes? It's a unique process. Um, I had talked to Vance Brothers and a couple other contractors that do the, the work, and, um, it's a known technology, but the actual truck to specifically apply it at this rate is, ended up being that these guys were the only ones able to do it. And Rob's here with Hall Brothers to answer any questions you might have regarding that, but. It's a high, it's a, it's a thick, high, it's a mastic seal process, um, a little different than a chip seal, because you won't have all the, the free chips, um, so it should be hopefully much better received by the public.
Yes, I'm not asking specifically for the process or what the, just that why we would receive one bid? Because that's concerning.
Yeah.
Definitely trying to make sure that we get at the most economical cost to do this work.
Right.
Strange to me to think that there's only one person in our reach that does this.
It was publicly advertised on Drexel, um, the way we've done it in the past with all other projects, but like I said, it is a specific technology that I think is up and coming still for this application rate that they're doing. And it really addresses two issues with the product. And that's, uh, surface friction and, um, what was the other one? Surface friction and then the, uh, I guess that's the main concern with it. It's a thicker rate than what this product has been applied typically by other contractors and.
We use Drexel Technologies, which is kind of the bid room for this area. Uh, I'm not sure how many bids, if we know how many bids were picked up, but there were other vendors that obtained the bid documents, uh, and they just, they elected not to bid on this site.
Comparable to, I do know the Overland Park chip seal came in around 225 a square yard. Um, so just for reference of the similar type of seal project, that was their price. Marysville, Kansas. Right, so this is essentially a preservation method, it's not a reconstruction. But it's, like I said, with this six-year seal plan is what I really envision as a, a routine process that we do every six years on each section of roadway. Visually, it's a very pleasing product, I, it's, it, it will turn the road very black and make the, the road look really nice, and then we'll get it restripped afterwards, and that, um, and then, but it provides a very thick coat of seal over the minor cracking that's on that roadway, so I guess, visually, it will improve, um, when you look at the road, your.
If Rob was able to just to kind of go through the process, maybe that'll help a little bit, so the guy that does it, so, uh, can tell you a little bit more about the, the process and the product, and again, how it maintains a road.
So we essentially make this.
Rob, you go ahead, just for record, name and an address.
Uh, my name's Rob Rowdybush from Marysville, Kansas, with Hall Brothers Incorporated. We have three of these plants that we run around the country, one's in Concordia, Kansas, one in Paradise, Texas, and one's a mobile plant down in Arkansas that we run back and forth between there and Missouri. And we essentially make it, it's, it's, the product itself is emulsion, asphalt emulsion with fine aggregates, and then a special chemi, chemistry from a company called Ingevity that adds the ability of this product to really adhere to the pavement and gives it durability, and then something else that's kind of unique is the cure time of it. Once we spray this, you can trick, uh, the public can travel back on it in probably 30 minutes to an hour. And then, uh, what happens is we'll make it at our plant, haul it to the road, beep in here, sorry. And, uh, you have to have a specialized truck that has a ribbon blender in it, because there's aggregate in the mix to keep it suspended in the mix, and pumps and spray bar that can handle the high aggregate load to spray it. But, uh, it'd be, just like any other seal project or asphalt overlay, we'll set up traffic control, we'll clean the road, spray it, 30 minutes, 45 minutes, we'll put traffic back on that side, and then we'll, we'll keep going on, just like that. What might be unique about this one versus other ones is it's a scrub seal, so behind our spray rig, we'll drag a, a broom, a broom rig that will carry a little bit ahead of material, so any microcracking or small cracks, we'll fill it, fill those in, and then it'll brush it along, giving it a little bit more texture and friction also.
Was this process done on 36, uh, in Marysville?
Um, it was done on, um, on, down the centerline rumble strips on 36, it wasn't done on main line, no. Like Okido Road, I don't know if you're familiar, Marysville. Okay, right there, we, we did it on Okido Road going to Okido Eight Mile stretch there. We, we do, we probably do 15 miles for Marshall County every year, and 15 or 20 miles for Dickinson County and various counties around the state.
You all have also done some K dot work.
Yeah, 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 some, some shoulders and centerlines, yeah.
And the aggregate, will that be bought local here, or will it be hauled in?
It'll be hauled in, um, it's chat from like southeast Kansas, yeah.
It, it is a bit of a, of a, for here, right? It, it's a little bit of a new process, we, we've spent a great deal of time, so I would put it, it's almost a combination between what you've probably seen as the old just seals, like if it. old just seals, like if a parking lot where they just spray and emulsify and they don't, there's nothing in it, right? It's, it's almost like a paint, right? And a crack, and a, and a chip seal where you put the oil down, you put the chips on top of it, but then the chips want to wear off. So it's a little bit of an in-between is the way I would put it is. So the oil and that rock are pre-mixed before they're put down, but you don't have as big of rock. So it, it, it's, it gives a texture to it, but it's applied closer to what you've probably seen where they do a seal coat, and then you come back in and redo your, your stripings, et cetera. Now, what it doesn't do, right, and, and this part of the program isn't intended, you know, if you had large holes, if you had pavement failures, things like that, it's, it's not going to fix those. And if you look at the roads that reason those are picked, those are roads that are in good condition, it preserves their life, we've talked about that, right? So that we don't have to go back in now and take out the asphalt, put new asphalt in. So it's more of a, as I said, it's a preservation process. We still will be doing full-depth patches in the city. We'll still be doing obviously the bigger projects. So this isn't the only project. It's for, again, as you can see, these are roads that are in good condition, but they have seven, eight, 10 years of life on them probably already since the last time they had asphalt put down. And so this continues the life and we can get, you know, again, if we can get three cycles out before we have to put asphalt down, it, it'll be a good program. So it's a little bit of a new product for us here, but from what I've seen and some of the other projects, and quite honestly, Dusty and I drove around any number of cities that have done different programs, you know, I think it's going to be a good asset to our overall maintenance program.
I think it's a good thing that we, we're looking at new technology, and I think that we haven't seen it out here. I would forward looking at it. That being said, I make a motion that we authorize city manager entering for the contract to Hall Brothers with the 2021 surface seal project, the amount of, is it not to exceed or is that the exact amount?
It's a unit-based pricing, right?
Yeah, it's unit pricing. There is a street that we will have to look at adding to it that I missed. It's that one going to the Kincaid property down there on, I missed that until I looked, started measuring striping.
Well, I think you have, I mean, you have the pricing at $1.73 a square yard. And how about if we say not to exceed 125,000? If we need more, we'll come back for authority.
Not to exceed $100 or $125,000 at $1.73. Hopefully that's acceptable.
I can't remember what the yardage is on, I just found it yesterday.
Pretty minimal. If, if we have something, we'll come back if we get.
Yeah, I just think that not having a number on the end that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, so this was crack sealed too, and Tammy did a good job getting that going and getting a lot of that. A lot of this had been crack sealed previous in the 2018 project. And then, yeah, so this will work right into what we're trying to do. And then so like when we showed that slide last time that showed all the consecutive years, these have all been crack sealed, and then they'll be sealed with this product. And then this year will be crack sealing the ones that will be sealed next year. So, yep. Thanks.
Khar, Malat, Shriver, Stites, Adams.
Mayor members of the city council, I'll give a introduction to this item. We also have Tyler Ellsworth, which is our bond counsel with us tonight, sitting over here to my left. As you recall, in 2020, we issued about $2, $2.5 million in general obligation bonds. They actually came in a little bit better than we initially expected. So we had at 2.475 million. That bond issue was solely for the Riverview Crossroads Project, which is 110th and Riverview. So we had anticipated we were going to need about 1.9 million, and then there's always some cost or overruns, and, and we also had water line relocation. So we went with a conservative number. We then received the bids through KDOT, and our match for the construction and construction engineering, because that's all, that's all they match on, actually ended up being quite a bit less, and our cost was only $664,000. Subsequent to that is when we went to STP on the 98th Street project, as you know. That's about a $7 million project. We obviously anticipated that if we were awarded that, we would have to go back out and get additional bond monies to do that project. So what's happened here is we have excess money from that project being Riverview Crossroad Project. And so at this point, what we need funding for is the engineering and the right-of-way on 98th Street. We can shift about $1,250,000 over to the 98th Street Project. And then later, we'll have to come back and incorporate dollars into a future bond issue closer to when we do construction, so late '23, early '24 timeframe. So I will let Tyler talk to you about the, the technical piece of this. But again, we can't just take bond money that's allocated for one project and just use it anyway. We, there's some legalities to how that works. And again, I'll let Tyler hit that, and then if there's questions, try to answer. We gave you a lot in your packet in the agenda memo, a lot of numbers, but you know, fundamentally, we're shifting dollars from one project to another through the bond program. And again, I'll turn it over to Tyler. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. Good to see you all. I don't have much to add to the background that Mike provided. So as he mentioned, we work together to prepare a resolution for your consideration this evening, and it does two things. As he said, it, it authorizes bond financing for your 98th Street Project. There's a $7 million price tag to that project overall, but there's 2.2 million that's not covered with federal grants and so forth. So we're authorizing bond financing in the amount of 2.2 million for that 98th Street Project. And because we have $1,250,000 surplus in the Riverview Crossroads Project, the second piece that the resolution accomplishes is allowing us to reallocate those dollars from one project to another. So with that, I'm happy to answer any, any questions.
And, and we've left, we've left two pieces in that account. One is for the water line relocation, so that has not been paid for yet. So utility relocations are always the responsibilities of the city. Normally, most of the utilities relocate their own utilities when they're in the right-of-way. In this particular case, BPU has its own easement. So while they're not moving very much, we basically now have a right-of-way, and because they already had an easement, we have to pay to relocate that portion of the line that was in an existing easement. So in this case, it's, it was originally estimated at 160,000, considering some recent cost adjustments, they expect that to go up a little bit. So we're, we kind of said, well, we're going to hold back about 200,000 for that, and then approximately 10% of the project cost. So if something comes up unforeseen, we, we've set back another, I'm trying to find my numbers there again, but a couple hundred thousand dollars in reserves. The way that federal projects happen is the project will be done end of year, let's say. It'll probably be two to three years before I'll actually know what the final cost of the project is. Because once the project gets done and all the information gets put in, KDOT reviews all those numbers and projects and everything, and then the Federal Highway Administration has to come in and audit all the work that KDOT did, and sometimes they come audit us too. And until they complete their audit and give a report, the project can't be closed out. So there's always some tweak at the end of that. Generally, it's pretty small. I mean, on the last two projects we've done that have been of this size, one was, we owed 30,000, one they owed us 30,000. So I mean, it, it's generally a fairly small amount, but we are reserving, because right now we have $1,673,502 in that, in the Riverview Project account, and we're only going to move $1,250,000. So we'll, we're holding back roughly $400,000 in reserve. And, go ahead.
It would, it would cost the same. There will be a fee for our opinion to provide that the reallocation has been done consistent with state law and federal law, but other than that, I'm not aware of any other fees.
Yeah, there's no, you know, when you do a dump bond issuance, you typically, the fees get built into the bond issue. So there's some minor fees here. I think they have to, you have to send this to the attorney general's office.
Yep.
But, but it's negligible in comparison.
Could this not money be used for the public safety building?
It could not be. Well, I guess I, I leave it to Tyler, but, but the allocations we did in, in your thinking about the 2019 bond election, we had money set aside for basically roads, streets, stormwater, and then we had money set aside for building, land and building projects. So those two were separate project authorizations. You know, I guess at some, I, I don't know about, can you go from a project that's roads to a project that's buildings? I'd have to defer to Tyler on that, but.
You could if it's strictly public safety. If it was related to your city hall, you wouldn't be able to do that most likely, and, and it would depend on exactly what type of city hall improvements you were making. But it's a possibility.
Something I think we ought to think. We do have a need for, for that. You know, it's kind of, you have to know we've got to do something, the financing structure for that. So I would like, invite for us to take a look at the options. Possibly using that money for the public safety facility.
Okay.
I would just, and that, that's fine. I, I would add that currently in the 98th Street Project, I think I noted in there, we have about $174,000, right? So the engineering contract that we approved was around $465,000, $475,000. So we did do a reimbursement resolution. So it's somewhat of a timing matter, I, I would, I would say at this point. Yeah, I just, yeah, so, yeah. I, I mean, at some point under, in one of those scenarios, we would probably have to issue additional debt. We do have money set aside, right? I mean, we have, we do have, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, and I don't think it's in our packet tonight because we don't, don't have the, that's in the next meeting, I have to go back. But so there is a certain amount of money allocated already in our funds for both what we term the town center project, as well as acquisition of land for the public, public works facility. I don't remember the exact dollars in, in my head right now, but I'm going to say roughly a half a million dollars in there. We can do that and bring it back to the next meeting if that's the will of the council. It's not going to stop either, probably, right? 98th Street Project is going to continue to go on. We do have our, we have a reimbursement resolution, so if we spend money from whatever fund, we'll reimburse that fund for those costs associated with that project at some point, whether it's a future bond sale issue, or say this happens at a later date and we pay those dollars off, just like we did on Riverview, we paid for engineering the same way. We, we, I think we used economic development funds at that point and then reimbursed it at a later date. So, but we can put all that together. So mayor, I, I would say if there's, if there's no action on that, we don't, we don't have to take an action. The council, the staff can come back at the next meeting with that information and. He's on his, he's on his way next door anyways, so.
I am. Yes, sir. Very good. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dana.
Yep. Enjoy your, your trip. All right.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, what's before you is ordinance number 1042. If you remember, in our last meeting, we, the group approved a business license for a pending liquor store that's coming in on K32. And at the time, it was discussed and brought up that Kansas, state of Kansas recently made some changes to their liquor license regulations. We took a look at those and, and the direction we got from, from council was essentially bring those in, in conformance, our own regulations in conformance with state regulations, specifically in the area of Sunday sales. So that's what this ordinance does. We do have some restrictions built into our ordinance and other parts of the ordinance. Those would remain unchanged, so you still couldn't sell CMB for off-premise consumption on Easter Sunday, and you couldn't sell liquor for off-premise consumption on Easter, Thanksgiving, or Christmas. So those would still be in effect by our codes, but it would allow for the expanded Sunday sales of CMB and liquor on Sundays that are not those days. Go to summarize, you would be allowed to, our, our liquor stores here would be allowed to open up for sales from nine until, oh, is it? 11:00. 9:00 AM until 11:00. I'm sorry? Yes? For cereal, well, yes, for cereal, because they have cereal malt beverage license, correct? It would be Monday through Sunday, 9:00 to 11:00, except on those dates that are otherwise stipulated in code that have restricted sales.
The only thing we're changing is Sunday.
Yes, correct.
Hold on just a second. I do, I do want to just make a note, because this is, this is a little unique ordinance in most of them, right? So for those who have ever been through a charter ordinance, we do so few of those. So the state, and it was by, by statute, not our thing. So if approved, once it's approved, we'll publish it, and we'll have to publish it on two consecutive Thursdays. We publish on Thursdays. And actually, it will not become effective until the 61st day after the first publication. So normally, as you know, most ordinances become effective with publication, and we, we adopt them on Mondays, they go to the paper, they get published on Thursdays, they become effective. This is just a statutory rule, which is a little different. So just, I say that just so you know, if somebody says, oh, so next Sunday I can do this, no, until it's gone past the 61st day. I can't tell you why the legislature did that. I, I probably have my, my guesses, but that's, that's the rules. So it, it is a little unique in that sense.
Khar, Malat, Shriver, Stites, Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, you know, in addition to the quarterly budget reviews that we do for the calendar year, this is kind of our first outward look and doing some projections to see how we're going to end up in fiscal year 2021, which obviously is going to affect how we budget in fiscal year 2021, which obviously is going to affect how we budget for fiscal year 2022. So again, critical success factors that the council has identified, communication, funding, growth and development, identifying opportunities, community leadership, ownership, engagement, and then long-term planning. So this is, you know, if I were to pull out some of those for how it relates to this presentation, it's going to be focused more on funding and the long-term planning aspect of it, and to give you in the public a little bit of insight how we do some of our forecasting. We're focused primarily on the general fund on the revenue side and our large items that we talk about during our quarterly reviews, and then do a little bit more broader review of the expenditure side of things. So what we're looking at right now is the, it's a graph showing sales tax performance from January to December from 2016 to 2021. So it's a little bit jumbled, but that black line, you see the incomplete black line that's it's on the the left side of your table, that's our sales tax collection and where they're landing from January through May. So you'll notice right there that we're performing a little bit higher than what our trend line typically is at this point in the year, which is good, and it's certainly better than what we get budgeted for. Remember, we set our budget in twenty in August of the previous year, and in August of 2020, there's a lot of uncertainty as far as what how COVID was gonna unfurl, what the pandemic was gonna do to some of our sales taxes. So this is how we handle some of our projections. On the sales tax note, so to date, we've collected about six hundred and sixty three thousand dollars in in sales and use taxes between local and county funds. Last year, at this point, we were six hundred one thousand, five hundred fifty two in fiscal year 2019, six hundred and twenty four thousand in in fiscal year 2018, which is the next closest comparison. So again, we're doing pretty well comparatively to that, at least those last five years. So if those trends were to continue, so what we do for our budgeting purposes is kind of a dynamic review of them. So how does it typically change month to month? Going back five years of data, and then that helps us kind of map that out. Because we're starting so strong right now, if we were to bear that out, we'd have more than a two, two point two percent increase. But we want to pull that back a little bit just because waiting on things to level out, by the time we actually get to budget adoption, we'll have a, we'll tighten the screws on our projections. But as far as looking ahead right now preliminarily, we're going to assume a two point two percent increase in sales taxes from what we budgeted and what we think we're going to end up at the end of the year. So that would bring it to a total of one point five two million dollars in sales tax, slightly above the one point four six that we had originally budgeted. But there's no.
So is the two point two is actually from fiscal year twenty?
To what we estimate.
And we were estimating a slight decrease in twenty one of one point eight.
Yes, sir. Yeah. So those numbers in between the bars are the percent change. So from fiscal year sixteen to seventeen, we went up five point one on and on and on. What we had budgeted fiscal year 2020, we are expecting, I say expecting, estimating, budgeting conservatively, seeing a one point eight decrease in sales taxes at this point. We're looking, it might be a two point two percent increase, which is, which is good. There's no reason to believe at this point in the year that sales taxes are not going to surpass twenty twenty figures because we're starting out so strong. But again, we want to until we get a little bit further in the year and get some more data in on some of these revenue items, you know, we want to be conservative. But right now, things are looking good from a sales tax perspective. And just to give you a little bit more confidence in our sales tax projections, what this chart shows is changes from the adopted budget in sales tax revenue versus what actually comes in at the at the time of audit. So the yellow lines are going to be what we budget. The blue lines are going to be how the end of the year actually turns up. So we're always within three point eight percent of our original budget and then audited year-end figures. So in a sixteen-month period, you know, we have been within a three percent accuracy rate, been able to to get our 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 hands around the sales tax figures and be able to present you pretty, if not accurate from the line items perspective, but from a big picture perspective, you know, pretty, pretty accurate. And in most cases, in three of the last five years, we have budgeted under what we ended up collecting, which again is good because that, you know, that will positively affect our fund balance. Fiscal year 2019 and 2020 were a little bit different. You remember fiscal year nineteen, and there was a lot of strange activity on the statewide level from sales tax performance, and then obviously fiscal year 2020 had all the confusion and different variables that we need to consider for that. But even with those two things, we're still within that four percent. When we miss, when we miss it, we're never going to get a hundred percent, you know, one to one as far as budget to actual, but we're within that three point eight percent each and every year, which is encouraging. I've not spoken with them specifically, but by and large, I think the, just from monitoring some of the different listservs that the city manager and I on, and just different conversations I've had with 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 some of our colleagues in the metro, it seems to be this pattern of we're actually doing pretty, pretty good. Now, I'm not sure exactly how they budgeted, but revenues are coming in strong kind of across the board. So there might be some factors, stimulus payments coming in at the beginning of the year, just pent up demand for that kind of activity at the beginning of the year that we're, want to be sure we're not inflating some of our year-end projections. That's why we're going to be suppressing them a little bit for the purpose of the review. But by and large, I think people are out there buying and and doing a lot of that kind of activity. I think a lot of it has to do. I think a lot of, you're you're right as far as internal within the city, you know, it's up, but not, if you look at use taxes from the county side specifically, that's considerably up. So use taxes are going to be, you know, if you buy something, it's counted at the point of sale. So if I buy something in in KCK, the sales taxes are, you know, ideally collected in KCK, no matter if I'm ordering it from, you know, Delaware or something. So online commerce activity seems to be picking up. And that's been, I mean, it's the sales tax trend lines, speaking specifically of sales tax, not use tax, they're a lot more easy to track. Use taxes kind of bump up and down, and we don't really, at least to this point, going back five years, there's not really a reliable trend line you can you can use on that. But generally speaking, they seem to be up.
There there is, broadly speaking, right, there's a shift from fixed sales tax locations, i.e. going to the commute, to a convenience store, to a place to buy things versus the use tax where people are ordering, you know, reason why Amazon's building so much and others, right? Because in those cases, the sales tax occurs, the point of sale is at the delivery address. And so you're seeing a broad shift of where a use tax was maybe a small, you know, fifteen or twenty percent. You're now seeing that maybe forty percent of all sales. And and that is a trend nationally and certainly regionally. That that kind of trend. So I think you're seeing other cities have seen a sharp increase. Some of that, right, because people have gotten out, buying more, doing some of those things. But but clearly, there's a switch from sales tax to use tax occurring. And I think you probably see that over a number of years. Absolutely.
Hey, why not?
Absolutely.
Hopefully here in, you know, I don't want to overpromise, but we have been wanting to do a kind of sales tax audit on a lot of those businesses to make sure, A, that whatever on zip code specifically, which I know this has been brought up on this at this level too, to make sure that when it's six six one one one, zip code gets counted, it's getting counted in Edwardville and not someplace else in KCK. So that's something that we need to, that we've worked with the state before on getting some of that data, and we'd like to flush it out more, but it's just a matter of, you know, timing with all those other analysis going on. But moving on, court fines. So what this chart is going to show, the blue line is what was collected in this revenue line item in between January and May of that particular year, and the orange line is is what ended up being the actual audited figure, obviously, except for FY twenty twenty one. That's our our estimate. So for court fines, this one's another one of those where there's a lot of different variables that makes it harder to determine with the, you know, tremendous amount of accuracy, how this, how this line item is going to perform. So those variables could be how many police officers we've got out on the street, people's ability to actually pay those fines, the ability to could actually conduct court. And we ran into, you know, there was obviously some fluctuation of that last year. So it's a little bit harder to find those variables for prediction purposes. So for court fines, we use kind of a rolling five-year average. And for this year, it's been pretty reliable and have worked to our benefit. So for this year, our our rolling five-year average came to three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars in court fine revenue. Typically, we're at forty one point two percent of what ends up being the year-end revenue at this point in the year. Right now, we're at a hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars in collection, which is about forty five percent of our estimated total, which means we're performing better in this light, I'm stronger in this item than what we had previously budgeted for. That said, again, for the sake of being conservative, we're going to hold our estimate right now at that three hundred and seventy five thousand mark until, you know, the trends seem to more strongly indicate that it's going up or down. So nothing really to report out of court fines other than, you know, the short story being we're, if we're performing a little bit higher than our estimates would have a suggest, would have suggested at the time of budget adoption. A lot of discussion around gaming revenue. So gaming revenue is not going to be reflected in our books on our general ledger reports for a couple of months, but they actually let us know the distribution schedule ahead of time. So we actually know what our January through June collection is going to be for gaming revenue. Just two of the checks just haven't come yet, but they have told us what those amounts are going to be. So at this point, we're at about a hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars in gaming revenue, which is about equal to our 2019, where we were at in 2019, which is good. I mentioned at our last meeting that revenue from gaming looks to be performing at some of the, that regular range that we were used to between, you know, that thirty three and thirty five thousand dollars a month consistently. It's starting to get that back over the last, you know, two, three months. So ideally, that will, that trend will hold and, you know, possibly improve as the year goes on, which will obviously positively affect our fund balance and the general fund. We, again, a lot of uncertainty when we adopted the budget, so we kind of assumed that this was going to take a hit. We budgeted about three hundred and twenty thousand based on the performance so far. If things are going to continue to perform as they have been, we're looking at about probably about a three hundred and seventy thousand dollar year-end figure, close to 2019, because we did start off a little bit slower, not as high as it's been in previous years, but much more in line and much healthier than what we had previously anticipated at the time of budget, budget, budget adoption. So, you know, about fifty thousand dollars stronger than what we had anticipated, which again is good. Ambulance fees, same kind of chart. Orange line is where we end up in the year. Blue line is where we are at at this point in the year. January through May collections so far, and you can see from the chart are as as strong as they've been since 2017. Again, I know we've made some changes and deputy fire chief has has done some, a lot of work with our vendors in this area. So it's, it looks to this point, making a positive impact. Budgeted this revenue line item to come in at a hundred and eighty thousand. Probably going to keep it right there for now because we're about where we, you know, typically would be performing if that was going to be our year-end rate. Again, that might fluctuate up and down a little bit, but I don't imagine this is going to come in at a year estimate of over a hundred and ninety thousand. And at least at this point, it seems to be performing as the budget would have anticipated. Franchise fees, franchise fees are probably the easiest ones to track from a graphical point of view. They they follow the same trend lines because we get a lot of the distribution patterns come in around the same because they're stipulated in those franchise agreements. The difference, I shouldn't say the difference, but the outliers in that, in that analysis would be 2019, which is in the yellow line, and then twenty twenty twenty, which is in that purple line, you'll see as you get into later on in the in the year, those fluctuate a little bit more. In 2019, that was because that's when the West Star and Casey P and L murder happened, which affected some of the distribution rate. It went down real low, and then it went up again. If you were to flatten those out, it would probably more closely mirror the trend line than what we're used to. Same thing with 2020. I think, you know, pandemic stuff just affected how things were coming in, but those seem to have been righted in 2021. Budget estimates for this was five hundred and twenty thousand, and right now, we're performing on the high end of the average. So we're going to hold it at five hundred and twenty thousand for the purposes of estimates for now, but it looks to be performing a little, it might be performing a little bit stronger. Again, just want to wait for a little bit more data to come in, at least till that that June number gets in so we can put a little bit closer and, like I said, tighten our, tighten those screws on those estimates. Other major revenue sources, IRB and pilots, our motor vehicle taxes and our property taxes. I pulled these out specifically because these are largely based on other formulas and not so much, you know, variables that we're trying to keep track of and anticipate. So we're not really anticipating changes in any of these, based on they come out. Broadly speaking, our motor vehicle taxes tend to come in stronger than what the state estimates and equations seem to suggest. But for right now, we're going to keep it there. And same thing with property taxes right now. We got a big, I mentioned it the last time, we got a larger than anticipated delinquent property tax payment at the beginning of the year, which seemed to have been applied across all the taxing entities in Wyandotte County. So we made, we budget at at ninety seven percent, assuming a ninety seven percent collection rate, so with three percent delinquency. You know, right now, it's looking like it could maybe hit that ninety eight percent collection versus ninety seven, which would be good, but for the, again, for the purposes of being conservative in our estimates, we're going to keep it at ninety seven percent. Any other questions before I, I know I'm kind of moving through this a little bit fast, so. So in general, our general fund revenue estimates, the the red line towards the right of the graph, that's what we had budgeted at our, what we thought we were going to be in August of 2020 at the end of of fiscal year 2021. Based on the analysis I just went through with those major revenue items, and then some extrapolation on some of the, you know, the smaller items are are, you know, business licenses, building permits, community center rentals, those kind of things. We look and we're looking pretty good as far as how we're going to end up in total revenues in for fiscal year 2021 to the tune of about a hundred and fifty thousand. So five months into the year, it's looking like it's not unreasonable to think that we will outperform our budget revenue estimates by about a hundred and fifty thousand. Well, this will get, this will get worked on and analyzed as we continue to work through the budget process, but five months into the year, nothing alarming from the revenue side of things that that is, it's throwing off our estimates in any kind of major negative way, which is, which is good. So to talk broadly about general fund expenditures. So what this chart shows is the January through May, what the percentage of the January through May expenditure ends up being with audited year-end figures. So in, for example, in fiscal year 2019, January through May, we had spent forty one point five percent of what was our audited expenditure level of that year. So the average for the last five years is forty point three. Right now, using our budgeted expenditure, expenditure for 2020, obviously, we don't have year-end figures for 2021 yet. We're at thirty nine point one percent. So one point two percent more, one point two percent improvement, I guess I'll say, as far as not so much cost cutting, but cost control. So at this point in the year, where we typically spent about one point two percent more than what we spent so far. So all that to say is just a demonstration that departments have done a good job, January through May, of of keeping things on track. We've not really gone overboard on, we don't plan on going overboard anyway, but the we're we're below spending where we typically are at at this point in the year, which is if revenues continue to perform well, and we can stay on budget for expenditures, then that's going to positively impact the fund balance. Now that said, so what this chart does is kind of make some assumptions based on past performance. So if we, unexpected things come out, come up throughout the year, on average, if we were to over, if we were to overspend by one point eight percent based on where we're at so far in the year, and those revenue estimates were to hold, then our general fund fund balance would be at about eight hundred and five thousand dollars or thirteen percent of 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 the revenue. Our financial policy would have us be at fifteen percent. We budgeted at actually a fund balance reduction at fourteen percent. That was done partly, you know, we wanted to lower the mill levy, which which drove that percentage down. Other, just other items stemming from from 2020. So we had budgeted a fund balance reduction at the end of 2021. What this chart shows is if we overspend, I'll say, you know, broadly by two percent, then it's going to still have a fund balance reduction of about ninety thousand dollars, bumping us down another percent as far as. then it's going to still have a fund balance reduction, uh, of about ninety thousand dollars, um, bumping us down another percent as far as percent of revenue. Obviously, it's our goal to stay on budget, and if we were to stay on budget and those revenues continue to come in strong, then we would increase the fund balance, probably not significantly, maybe, you know, somewhere in the tune of thirty to forty thousand. Um, but it's a good range to be at, at this point. This chart is also irrespective of any other, um, outside funding that may impact the general fund, specifically American Recovery Plan, those dollars. Um, I think we've got more concrete information of exactly how much we're going to get. If we don't have it, then I know that's going to be coming soon. Um, and how exactly we true up losses from twenty-twenty, which would, could then go back into the general fund, are going to improve that fund balance as well. So this is just looking at the data that we've got now as it relates to revenue and expenditures. Broadly speaking, again, revenue's doing well, uh, overperforming where we wanted to be, where we thought we would be at, and the departments are doing a really good job of keeping on budget, coming in below where we typically are at, at this point in the year in spending. So two good things to be at, two good places to be at in this stage of the budget development process. So to give you a little bit of a guideline of how we're going to do, you know, continue to do this for the next three meetings. Um, so at the next meeting, that's probably where we're going to have a lot of our mill levy discussions. We just got the county valuations at about four fifty-two today. Um, so not a whole lot of time to provide some additional analysis on that, as it would affect this. Uh, they did go up by about nine percent, all told, uh, which is going to have an effect on the mill levy discussion. July twelfth is when we'll need to be having that discussion about the revenue neutral rate that we brought up at the last, uh, budget review. Broadly speaking, if the evaluations go up, it's going to drive that revenue neutral rate down. So there is going to be a, a, uh, statutory process to work through the budget based on the new state laws. Um, we've also got IRBs that are coming off, uh, IRBs that came off last year that are already captured, which obviously drew our valuations up to the tune of about, you know, two point five million. Um, we've got IRBs that are to be going, going to be coming off that aren't reflected in the preliminary evaluation. So we need to get ahead of that. Uh, that's a dance that we have to do every year. So this is just another added wrinkle into it. So what we have in those discussions in July, um, that's really going to firm up, you know, how exactly the general fund budget comes together. Then in August, we'll have the mid-year budget report, so we'll have January through June budget figures for pretty much all of our line items. Um, that'll give us a more clear indication of how we're going to perform through the rest of the year. And then, you know, based on those other two meetings, we're going to have more budget discussions. Just to see how it all, you know, how it's all shaking out at that point. So that's what we're looking at for the next, you know, up until August ninth, depending on how some of these conversations go, we may have more meetings coming out of that. But, um, that's where we're at now. Short story from this presentation is that revenues are up more than we expected, which is good, and spending is lower than where we typically are at this point in the year, which again is also good. So, and a good job to all of our, our department heads for, you know, keeping on budget and, and, you know, staying where they need to be and coloring inside the lines from January through May. But if you have any other questions, I would, I would love to answer them.
Thank you, Zach. You've done a great job getting down into the numbers. And this will be an interesting year because of new statutes and how that will really work. Some of the, you know, like most statutes, they went out, this looks great, and then you said, for example, what about IRBs? Where you're putting the full value back to the tax roll, but taking away the IRB revenues, that you're not letting me make that back up. So, yeah, so something comes on the back, you have to offer, and say, well, a hundred percent of that is due revenues. But in reality, they did generate revenue, but it's highly, they don't give you any type of revenue. So there's a number of those things that will make this probably a little different process. For here this year, and part of it, kind of play it pretty conservative in how we do that process. You know, finding ourselves, and one of the concerns is we do everything, and then all of a sudden, you don't know about how to put it on the back, which is statute, you didn't know. Or there's, uh, properties that are under, uh, you know, a bug or a, or a tax, right? We don't know that, we don't get notified, and then all of a sudden, oh, we figured it out, we're putting them on the back. It's just going to create some gap. We'll work through them and. Well, I only have one item to add, uh, on here. So I, if you remember a year ago, maybe, Baskinall had come in, maybe two years ago, to have a temporary gravel parking lot. Uh, but then they came here, and they said, no, you have to have it all done by, I think, this point in June, this year. Uh, they have them, that's an eight area that was the temporary parking. So they just completed that, uh, and you may see some equipment out there, uh, but that's related to the pipeline. I just, I wanted to note that because I got word. I, I do believe Chief Williams has one condition item on the fire side.
Seth, man, Chief, please be reminded, it is in Fayetteville, yeah. Boo board? Yeah. Uh, the fourth grant was a good year in a row, the city reported a fifty-fifty action plan. Usually we had spending period of about forty-seven hundred dollars. Two percent back from the state school, point three hundred dollars once we get the process, the federal done. The ID round, one day, checking up, and that worked fifteen in a row. Let's keep that grant covered by all the law, the fire, like, and tools for the contest. You keep pursuing, so.
And I just note that, yeah, those, those are some of those little ones, but otherwise, I mean, place department has those sometimes around, like the seat though. Or some, you know, some of these smaller grants that don't necessarily rise to the top of this, but really help our departments do their job by kind of covering some of those smaller items. Again, we might not think about it, but it's, you know, a few tools here, it's a, it's a, it's here, it's a, you know, license, like re-remains of that nature. Try to use, raise, or, or, as we call our, our, pursuing those where, where they, they, otherwise, mayor, I don't have any comments. Do I have a question? Zach, do you have any?
Yeah, just real quick, um, and I'll be sending this out to the group tomorrow. So we do, it's mentioned in the rapport, but we do have our vaccination event at the community center coming up at the end of the month, June twenty-sixth. There are some volunteer opportunities for that, that, um, Wyandotte County Emergency Management included me in on. So I'm going to be distributing that information to the council so they're aware of it and just kind of putting it out there broadly. So we can, if people do want to volunteer and help out at that event, then that will be available to them. That's all I got. Thank you.
We, uh, have a, this is the contract with Dr. Campbell. He is a professional fellow student on KU education system. Um, we also sought to relook at the other digital policy measures contract. So late last year, uh, we would have to do an RFP for some medical treatment. We got a prescription, I was going to say, that KU worked with Dr. Campbell, the medical director in North Carolina. I'm saying, I think it was twenty-five hundred dollars, we sold savings, we had it, it was a medical director.
I, I don't know that it was that much, but we're getting a lot more out of the money that we're spending. Uh, I want to say that the difference was about a thousand dollars a year, but we're getting, uh, something like twenty-four hours of in-person, uh, training and, uh, consultation that we weren't getting before. So I think that we did save some money, and I, I can't remember when they died, it was a quarterly amount in this case. But, uh, this is a cost savings with, with more, uh, more product and service out of it.
Chief, we're seeing your memorandum, and those three items, which are great concern to me as well. But you certainly have my attention on that. For the reasons for comment on, if somebody could be redirected or a portion of it, we want to move forward.
Yeah, didn't speak rapidly to, uh, you know, I was, right, that, you know, sense that, um, we have, we have forms, which are, we exit interview forms, and they ask a number of great questions, but there's always reluctance to fill those out, and you can't make anybody do it. So my job has been to, you know, speak at length to those who are choosing to do something else, choosing to move on for whatever reason. And then in addition to that, speak with the group and say, you know, what are the prevailing, uh, topics or obstacles to success and keeping people here? And these are somewhat reoccurring themes from the past. And so in two thousand and eight, you could have asked this of the group, and they would have said very similar to these things, to include stopping corruption from the past. So we, we come full circle again, I think, you know, I think there's a lot of positive loyalty, and I, I believe some of them are here, uh, representing them individually and as a group, uh, that they, they want to hear somebody champion on their behalf. And that goes beyond what I can do, because I don't control the purse strings of policies related to that. So I think they just want to be heard and quite frankly, seen a little bit, that they're, they're important to you and you're important to them. And I think they deliver a quality service, and we're trying to add those folks who adopt those same principles, loyalty, integrity, fairness, excellence, every day. And we don't fault anybody for moving on as a part of government organization policing, especially in today's environment. And, you know, we have that group that has chosen a few other things outside of a, you know, maybe a quasi-law enforcement. And then those folks who want to seek out either more money, greater opportunity in their own lives or their own family, uh, in or some sort of scheduling scheme that fits their family, that seems to be one of the reoccurring. Well, so we're competing with communities similar in size and maybe in complexity in the, in the organization, but dollar for dollar, much busier than they are in most cases. You know, we go out there and do the same job, but we're doing it for less. So really, as it's defined to be on this, I was regurgitating that information that I got, was if it says twenty-three dollars an hour for us, and that same job is twenty-six dollars an hour, that's where the inequity seems to be, it's frustrating. And they're like, well, not only are we doing that same job, we may be doing it at a greater level in the same comparative communities. So that's really about it. Nobody is embarrassed by the facility, it was meant to be temporary, we were excited at the time. You were here for that presentation, because it was so much better than where we were. But it's now we've signed, we, we, we're not progressing forward, but I remind them, and they've heard it, that there's been discussions at this level and that the funding and the design and all of these things take time. And so they're willing to, uh, be patient with that, but, you know, when even our booking facility remodel, it's good for one person at a time. But when we have three, they're running all over each other, trying to find somewhere else to put this person to do this, and it's not safe and it's not the right way to do. But we've come a long way since day one, so, uh, you know, we're probably doing that piece of it. But that, that little shiny thing, it's just not about that new building over next door. It's about the functionality of it too, uh, and, and we, we kind of outgrown the, the temporary facility that way. The schedule is more global policy and that sort of thing, and I reassure you, we run the most efficient and effective scheduling scheme that you can have at police department. Don't have enough bodies to run those other schemes that are ten hours long and that sort of thing. And the twelve-hour shifts are not recommended, but we're not opposed to hearing those kinds of things and considering them. But we want our guys to be fresh and ready for the next day. And if you want to know a scheduling scheme that looks just like ours, you just have to look for our neighbors at K C D. That's not much different than in those cases we're going to do. And we've been doing it for years and years, and it's been successful, but we're open. I think this whole group is open to some formal discussions and considerations. We've done the math, I've been doing police chief work for twenty years. This is not anything new, scheduling schemes and these types of things, and these cycles, we drive different things. They will agree, and they don't always work. And we committed a hundred percent, and we say, you know what? We're four months into this and it just simply doesn't work, we just need to take a different perspective, and we have to go back to work, since it's best for them and best for the community matter. You know, so I think overall, uh, we have a, a positive mindset going forward. They're welcome to speak if that's not true, but I think the feedback, they were honest, and they're, they're good folks, they're doing good work. And they've been great ambassadors, uh, we have some longevity that's probably present in our room right now. They've been great ambassadors to the community. Uh, you know, these are the guys that go out and do it every day, don't get us in trouble. They're not in the dukes, we're not in the courts, bits on the civil side, these are the guys that do that every day. And we want to add to that, but we want to also not add to this, so they go to Oprah Park, so they go to, quite frankly, let's speak honestly here, there was not a day up to about three years ago that we had any competition with large fringe gangs. It's bigger than us, but they didn't pay better, they didn't have better benefits. That they hit became attractive, because number one, they have a good scheduling scheme, they're paying three and four dollars a month for the same job, same. You can go over there and do exactly the same, they're saying policies and the radio system is the same. So it was an easy transition for more money, right? And so then, but those are bodies and intellectual value that we miss out. And so we had, that's who we're competing with, competing with those, uh, communities that Mike Webb put on the board and said, these are the people are competing from that same pool. Uh, if you're going to Kansas City, Kansas City, or Oprah Park, you're probably going directly there, you're probably going to be competitive over there. It's, we have a few that are certainly competing that way, but we're recruiting from same pool, the Barnes, Pringles, Baser, and Toganoxi. And I think it's important that we do something to move forward. There's no miracle expectation here, right? These things take time, they have to be studied, and thus I think they're, everybody's grounded in reality. But let's start today, let's start with this message, and then let's start with this budgeting cycle. And let's do the things that maybe we were a little reluctant to do, such as the polos and keeping our, keeping our, our pay scale up to date and moderate, doing things all the time in consideration with how it impacts our budget and everybody else. But we want to be competitive, and we're, and we're just simply not. And that's the first frustration, you can't get them through the door, you can't keep them. So that's the piece of, then you have to schedule, we'll do, deal with that ugly, and then we have the facilities which we know is a law process. So that's my.
Well, I, I certainly value the professionalism and the staff that we have on, on the, uh, public safety in both departments. And actually very impressive, and put a little story, can't remember the officer's name, it was a tall gentleman with the beard.
Officer Grimes.
Brian, just in that muckie there. A few weeks ago, in the late, from the nine or ten o'clock or five or thirty evening, and there was a lady over on Third and Second Street that, that, uh, didn't plan her gas mileage, and they'd run out of gas, and, and I both stopped and talked with her. And, um, now, a local officer, and extremely polite, very helpful, I think he even, you know, you led the way down to a gas station. And so I really appreciate that kind of service, and he speaks very well, so thank you very much, all of these, uh, for your service and actually.
And if I could just add on to Chief, these comments, you know, I, quite honestly, all the department heads have probably had the same discussion, so. So, and, and I know we came back and we put the, you know, we had that pay plan in place, and we talked about when it come back, and how you allocated that pay plan. Didn't do that, but, you know, we see, we're seeing the same pressures in the other areas, right? I mean, I, I can tell you, oh, it works, right? We have an in-person, say, young, you know, pay here, uh, three months or so left, going to work for a large distribution company, and they all know well as a unique suit, right? So two dollars a gift, so it's an hour. I mean, and I understand that, I, I mean, I, as the chief said, there's no magic bullet, but this is the environment we're in, right? And, and so it's, it's stressful, I mean, stressful for women that service, and it's stressful for the friend of the wife, and it's stressful for people that, uh, represent the voters, so I, I, I just, you know, I just want to note that, that it is somewhat profitable. It's not every position, it's not every time, but there is stressors out there. Uh, and again, I don't think that any of them are new, right? I mean, I've been talking about them for several years, and Mr. Mathies and I go way back and, you know, and, and sometimes it's hard, I mean, I, I remember calling up, you know, the county, the district. I mean, I, I remember calling up, you know, the county, the district, the cities and saying, if we get a sixty-day allowance on our property taxes. Because it wasn't about what people got, it was literally where they're going to get them, right? And, and so, you and I, especially in this group, lived through some of those, you know, through some of those, you know, that worked in our, our city. I, I was glad that, you know, the chief had these discussions, wanted to make sure that he, you know, communicated with the council, keeping informed of the, of the director. Which usually is part of the, part of, right? And I think the prime minister was excellent about the money shifting. Obviously, I'm a little different, right? But that might be an option. And I have been doing some work kind of behind the scenes on some of those other issues that are, that are, one of the roadblocks, or science stuffs. We haven't had a good year.
Zach, could you remind everybody just a little bit about the e-waste recycling?
Yes, ma'am. So we do have some e-waste unicorn receptacles that were unused from the citywide cleanup a couple of weeks ago. They're stationed out on the east side of the building. Put out a notification in the hard copy and quarterly newsletter we're gonna start doing. Put it out on our website and our Facebook. But essentially, we want people to, we don't wanna bring them back to the unicorn facility empty. So if people have electronic materials that they want to get rid of, then fill this box up and we'll haul them off for you. The only real restriction in that is the, the old tube TVs. The, the facility won't accept those, but I think they can still be taken to the household hazardous waste facility over in KCK. But thanks for the reminder. That, that'll be out all week or until it gets filled up, whichever gets, whichever happens faster. I, I'm too short. I know what, they've given me all but two of the weights. But yeah, as soon as I get all that, I'll report it back.
I think it's really important to hear the, whether it's our fire department or our police officers and how they're feeling in their everyday job, whether it is conversation or work environment, on keeping these mission scheduling that is kind of before and trying to do, be problem solvers and find ways to keep our attention well. So I think it is a good sport, I think it's a sport for our, for our government as an important part of the vision. And I just wanted to mention to the guys here and to the fire department as well, you got my email, should anything ever come up, it's, it's, um, hopefully not the way to get to a letter and, and to get to budgeting, it's my, that would be, it's maybe all the year. We have a little more communication and, and very, and that would take a while. Making that available. So anyway, I just wanted to make that available. And I'm sure everybody feels the same way as you, that we love to hear from you. So, oh, oh, sorry, almost, almost done. Um, Dusty, for the streets presentation and repairs coming up, thank you for that. I am always excited to hear about street repairs in our city. It's been, you know, word on that, so the people, you know, the title, that would be great.
Just reiterate, you know, what they said, I feel appreciated, but we, um, probably, fire. How good it's, kind of a sad situation.
Well, if you go back to kind of what you wanted, we have some longevity for us. There's several more in the back here in the last five years that are one of the twenty years getting ready to walk out the institute and pop. There is a turnover ratio that, we also have, what we used to say, that's the long round. We have the Johnsons, just one of those. I know we sent an email out to everybody that was there and wondered if we could have a detail, have this on, I'll look over it. I did have a chance to talk to them, so we're very appreciative of the city for bringing in the city staff and just welling all that up. But also like mentioning that the city works building, publicly safe buildings. I have definitely had a board and I have been for a long time. And the K plan, I'm there, for some of these, especially the way that the country is now. It's all the territory for a few months. Who has, has here?